This conference will now be recorded.
I call the order, our meeting, state council meeting for Thursday, July 28th. Roll call?
Thank you, Dave.
Here.
Randy Hall?
Here.
Anne McIntosh?
Here.
My first.
Yep.
Mayor Shai.
Mayor Shai is... Are you considered here, Mayor Shai?
I'm here, thank you very much, but please don't ask me to say anything else.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, um, pledge allegiance. Randy, would you?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Okay, uh, mayor's report, public hearing on August 18th on the accessory dwelling unit standards. Number two, planning committee vacancy, interested candidates inquire at city hall or contact the mayor. There's also a city council vacancy, so, um, let the city know that you're interested in that. Deputy clerk vacancy, advertising for this position and interviews continues. The property acquisition environment assessment phase two is needed for that property. And, uh, side sewer inspections, that is, I guess, that, uh, John's not qualified to do the inspections, so we're looking into an agreement with Winlock to provide those inspection services for us. Council reports?
Yes, I have one. I have an article in the newspaper announcing that I'm trying to get together people for a farmer's market. Jump the card off at your shop. So far, I've got one person that called me yesterday, but anybody who wants to, to, uh, join in, uh, contact city hall or contact me, my phone number's in the newspaper.
Okay. Cool. Anybody else? And let me unmute Jason. Jason?
I have nothing.
Okay. All right, so moving on, agenda approval.
I move to approve the state council meeting, agenda, July 28th, 2022, and amendments for the state council meeting on 7/14, 2022.
My second.
Okay, so we're just doing one.
One at a time?
One at a time.
Yeah.
No. Um, okay, so we've got a, uh, motion by Randy Hall and a second by Anne McIntosh. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Okay. Oh, sorry, Jason, we're just gonna listen to you point issues.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed, hearing done, motion passes or agenda passes, minutes approval.
Minutes approval, big council meeting.
We have a motion from Randy Hall for the minutes approval for city council this, uh, July 14th, 2022. Any discussion? Oh, sorry, um, and a second by Anne McIntosh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any?
Aye.
All right.
And amendments passed, voucher approvals.
I guess I can do this too. I'll make a motion that we approve the voucher, um, for amended end of May 2022 of $259,063 for a May 2022 total of $318,632. Amended first of June 2022, $61,663 and 10 cents. End of June 2022, $30,940 and 1 cent for a June 2022 total of $92,603 and 11 cents. End of July 2022, uh, $16,130 and 97 cents for a July total, 2022 total of $219,366 and 86 cents.
Did you jump up some money? Is that that new sign, the job, y'all, last week?
Uh, I don't know.
Some kind of sandstone sign?
Sandstone sign, I don't know.
One or two. One or two. Sandra asked for a HDU sign for Warden Park, the 3,000.
I believe more than one thing that was, that included in the part.
You could feel like it's a dotted line on me?
I can speak to you if you can hear me.
Uh, that would be for the deposit on the, uh, Warden Park something, and it will be grant funded. It was a couple of years ago.
So looking for a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, second by our, motion by Mike Parsons, second by Randy Hall, and any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Enameral, so vouchers pass. Special reports, there are no special reports, we can go on to city business. Um, public hearing, so, we get to do a public hearing. We need a motion to open the public hearing for X minutes, is there anyone? Anyone online that wants to talk about during the public? We need a motion to open it, but for how long, and I was just seeing how many people we have to talk, it just looks like we have. Motion to open the public hearing at 6:12 for as long as it needs?
Yes.
Okay? We've got a motion to open the public hearing at 6:12. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Jay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we can open the public hearing. So, as far as the public hearing goes, this is for the city council improvement program, and we've been given a list, and is there anybody that sees anything on this list that they think doesn't need to be there or needs to be there, or any changes on it? And are we? This is just the public hearing amendment. And then we're not even talking about.
Hey, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes. That's such a convenient thing.
Wish my kid would know.
Yeah. All right.
I'm not too familiar with the streets, but that, the street by the park goes around and comes up by Reggie's House.
A Street and then, uh...
Then that curve, that curved back street.
Yep.
Is that, is that included in here?
Do you know what road that is?
It's only when you, when you go north on A Street and then right after.
It's like the last street.
Well, you know, so that would be Fifth Street.
Fifth?
Fifth Street just east of. So please can we? A B, yeah, this street A, and this is.
Yeah. All right, so, any, anybody from the public have anything to say? Going once, gone twice, go for a motion to close the, do we need a motion to close the meeting? Public hearing is now closed at 6:16 PM, July 28th, all right. Um, council to consider resolution 14202, updating the Timberland Bank checking account signups. So, as you saw in the packet, um, there has been, uh, changes with the deputy clerk and with the mayor per temp, and so I guess we need to be signers on the, on the bench.
There's too many signers. I understand that the two girls and the mayor, why you need them?
Because if the mayor's not here, then I act as the mayor.
Okay.
It's because, uh... Yeah, we got. When you turn all your paper stuff to fly. Uh, so looking for a motion?
I make a motion to update the Timberland Bank checking account signups.
With resolution?
Resolution 14-2022.
Okay, we've got a, uh, motion by Anne McIntosh, and looking for a second? Second, Jason just got disconnected, there's still three of us here, so we're okay, right? If he calls back in, then we'll get, so seconded, um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed, none, or resolution 1422 passes?
Yeah.
Um, we just passed, uh, 1422, uh, updating the bank checking account assignment.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, council to consider ordinance 202202, the, uh, 2022 budget, second amendment, updating the 2022 employee salary schedule. I don't know, Anne, you weren't here the last time, um, we were talking about not being able to hire people, and I don't know who brought it up, that the inflation has gone up like 8.9% and they're predicting 2023 to be, uh, another 10% or something like that. Um, and the pay scale, we had the pay scale, and it's pretty low. So, we all thought that it'd be a good idea to increase the pay, and that's what this was.
So we're gonna have a $900,000 increase?
We are having, for all of the employees, they're going, the, uh, they're going from stage, stage one is moving to stage three, which is a 10% increase, is that right, 10%? Yeah.
The total listed here is what the total will be taken from the fund, it's not the total.
Right, wait, I'm trying to find that.
Meeting.
You're back, I'm sorry to have to meet with you.
Oh, do I need a aye?
No, we're waiting for a motion on the, uh, ordinance for the.
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance 202202 for the amendment, amendment updating 2022 employee salary.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jason Daly, do we have a second? A second by Randy Hall, and discussion?
Well, I think this will really give us the edge in helping us find, uh, uh, really good employees in the future, so.
I don't know, I don't even know that it'll give us an edge, it'll get us closer towards the edge.
Yeah, it'll, it'll increase our, our, uh, uh, the, the amount of people that will actually come to apply.
Yes.
It's just a chance to hire some good people, where you're trying to find. We need to do it, we need to. Come through it, I mean, Jason, you gotta, you have some of those.
No, we, we, well, we have to at least compete with McDonald's. Yeah. We're real close. Man, and that person doesn't get to talk the stuff that these, that these people do.
Yeah, but, well, we ain't, we ain't running McDonald's, we're running the city, and we need to, you know?
Yeah.
Because the inflation, we need to save, not, not be throwing this stuff around willy-nilly.
Oh.
Well, I'm not saving, you don't have to, we're, 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 nobody will want to work here at 10% less. No, we're moving down, that's what I'm saying. I think that's a, that's a very, very, very. I think that the employees need to be able to.
They need to be, they need to have.
I need a last special too, please?
Otherwise, we don't have, we don't have any distance. We, we can always, we're waiting for me.
If you don't hire me, you're 10% more, next week, we're gonna say, okay, we got you, you're going.
No, you know, it's, it's true for you, it's not.
I didn't do that.
It's months, three months. We're not making up those 10% numbers that, uh, when those are back, that will be. We're all, that, oh, oh, or, 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 or.
One that'll be applying will have to, which will be. Along with the state. The ones that are, uh, with the main reason, uh, with the main reason, uh, so, uh, it's not, it's not funny, it's, 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 we're gonna start out low, because we got something to want.
Well, we're, we're starting out, we're starting out, yeah. Um, that's the problem, our, our, our pay scale that we had two years ago, and then we updated it a year ago. Since then, things have gone, gone for us, so, to hide it, just for instance, two years ago, I paid $1 hour for the people that worked for my, myself, so, now I have to pay $20 an hour for those same people. Otherwise, I just go work somewhere else.
Right.
And then, then, we're screwed, and all we got left is 10% less. And this is that, is, we're not a minimum wage, this isn't a, this should not be a minimum wage job.
But you said we're all paying them all at McDonald's, managers, and they don't make chicken feet.
Can I, can I say something?
They do not make chicken feet, so it's not like we're paying them that.
Okay.
Uh, one, one thing about paying people, uh, more is that you're gonna retain people, you're gonna get people that have experience, you're gonna get people that, that come in and take, instead of get people that come in to be trained to a specific job and then move on to somewhere where they're gonna get paid better, which happened, and has happened quite a bit in, in the past, so this is, this will, you know, alleviate some of that.
We need to say, much of a rainy day, we still have money saved, we still have money saved for a rainy day, and.
The rain gets frosting now?
Well, then how can, how can we not pay, how can we not pay people to, to study when their, their bills have gone up through the roof?
But the others, especially if they're starting out.
Uh, yeah. So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Uh, then, uh, so we've got three, Randy, Jason, and Randy, Jason, and, uh, May. Okay, motion passes. Let's see. All right, number four, council to consider agenda bill amendment number one to Robinson Noble Environment Assessment Contract. So this is for the phase two of the environmental, um, site assessment. They did phase one, and they, they do phase two, figured out that there was oil spurs, and, and funds are already in place for this project.
Does anybody know if this is grant money funding this? No grant money? But then how, how the heck do they discover that it's going to find out?
And probably because they, that's what they paid them to do on the phase one, and somehow found out, and it was okay.
Probably back in the railroad depot days.
Yeah. Well, we made that question, you.
Order to go, number one?
Number one? Well, we, they know what.
But we have, we, we have to have it.
Well, we already spent, we were in trouble, uh, put a certain amount of money into testing, it's still in that budget, and it's already placed in the project, the fund are already there, that we've already agreed on in the past.
What?
Well, that's what we need to find out, what if there's nothing then? And then they've got to be to land.
Yeah, can I, can I make a motion?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amendment, uh, agenda bill amendment number one for the Robinson Noble Environmental Assessment Phase Number Two. Is that right?
Uh, yes. So we had a motion by Jason Daly, we had a second by Randy Hall. We got a second by Randy Hall. And any, any more discussion? There are no discussion, we'll go with... All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye. Okay, whatever.
Alright. Alright, the final, number five. Counsel to consider agenda for Keystone Granite contract for Warden Park. And this one, is this one is covered in the grant? This one is covered in the grant? And I haven't talked to these guys. But the one picture that I see on here, I'm not impressed at all.
Aye.
Do you know it's a grant? Can you go like a grant? $100 for that piece of ground, are you joking? I thought it was supposed to be like a, a boat or something.
And I don't know if that's the pictures that they are intending on building. But that's it. Or if there's something else. I don't know. That is not, because that's the one that's...
That's the one that's on there.
Of course, everything's getting more expensive.
Are we waiting on a picture or something better for this to submit to us?
Yes.
That being, I mean, because we're not in agreement with how that's looking, then I'm not gonna vote on mine.
Yeah, me neither. I don't think any of us are feeling that one right now.
And I haven't seen a picture of it or nothing, so I'm... But for $46,000, it better, it should be pretty darn nice.
That's it?
It's, excuse me.
That ain't no better.
Oh, this is a lot better.
It's probably no better. Not for no $46,000.
Hope I made that sketch.
They're putting concrete underneath it, I know concrete's expensive. Is the pad already there?
Hey, Mike, can I ask, is that something that the park board? Is that something that the park board has approved and have they seen that?
Um, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah.
So, yeah, so there was quite a bit of work to try to find the best deal that we possibly could. And with installation and with the concrete footings poured, I can assure you that this is the very best price for this type of shelter.
Is the concrete already there?
The pad is, but they're gonna have to pour substantial footings on the outsides of the pad.
So they aren't pouring a 20 by 20 pad, they're just doing the footings for the posts?
Correct, yeah, so there's six, there's six footings. Each one is three or four feet deep and two feet wide. So they're fairly substantial footings for this shelter. Has a metal roof on it, it's all vinyl coated, so there's no exposed roof on the roof. And if you look up, it's a tongue and groove mahogany ceiling. So it is a very nice shelter that should last a very long time. Breakwater painting. And once again, it's all grant funded, it was part of the original plan.
It's a very nice, tasteful room. Nice, I love it. It's like getting some of those gas and get some...
So we're just gonna buy the park board?
Correct, yeah, I went to the park board and if you remember the original plan that went through the council, when was that? Well before the park actually broke ground. That city council. And then if you also... Nope, and if you also remember, we've got an additional $30,000 grant from Trans Alta to help cover the price of the shelter. There's Trans Alta grant money and there's also RCO grant money, money that's dedicated to this.
That makes more sense. I, I, for some reason, I was confused about something else. And with, with that information, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to move... Mike, with the information that Mayor Shai said and with it going through the park board and being approved by them, I, and being grant funded, I don't see any reason why not to. It's part of the original plan. And it's something that, that was already, already, uh, sought after, I guess. Are you wanting to table this until next time, or?
Yeah, I prefer to, I believe I prefer to table it, call it meetings so that we can get more... Because the, the, uh, the packet has a different stuff on it. So I'll make the motion, I make a motion that we table this until the next meeting. So we can all this better. So we have a motion by Mike person to table this and any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that passes every table. Any public comments? There are no public comments. Um, alright, any... Nobody else, nothing else, right? Elected official comments? Alright, with that, meeting adjourned at 6:42 PM.